Yeah, she's getting shoes. It should be in your pocket. Rhonda, what time you coming down tomorrow? Because I'm going to stop there before I go on the ritual. I've made it my mistake. I've got two circle brief sessions. I've got something in my pocket, thank you. She's coughing, so I gave her cinnamon.
We had a room. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everybody and appreciate everybody being here tonight. And we will start off with the pledge. And Tilly, could I ask you to come up and lead the pledge? Would you care to do that? If you just stand right here?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
They got it and they patchy home too.
I'm impressed.
Till my start looking at that phone.
Okay, just a reminder, if you'd like to sign in, there is a sign in sheet up front. And I know of one revision, we would like to add a closed session.
Ms. Flissa, if you can do that, we'll do that as item number 11 and move adjourned to 12. And the reason?
Personnel.
Personnel, okay. Okay. Well, first of all, let's welcome everybody. It's good to have a full house. And we got several good things to do this afternoon. The first thing we would like to do is we want to honor our mountain movers for this month. And we're going to start out with our classified mountain mover. And that's Mr. Matthew Robinson. So Matthew would come up. And I tell you why. You want to come and present? Matthew, of course, has been employed with the Estle County School District for five years. He's a technology technician. And he loves everything about his job. He says he enjoys working in Estle County with the people of Estle County and with the people of Estle County. He likes that the kids at the schools take a genuine interest in technology and inquire about his job. He even had a student write a song about him titled "Computer Man." And if you see Matthew out, I mean, listen, Matthew and Andrew, they both do a fantastic job. And Matthew's so much more than just a technology person in our schools. And he does a lot of things for our schools. And Matthew, for all you do for our school district, I will present you with the Medal of Excellence. Our next mountain mover is Ms. Kim Plowman. And Jeannie Jo, you want to? Come on up, Kim. Kim began her career with the Estle County School District 22 years ago at Hargit Elementary. This is her 20th year as a teacher. She's taught first and second grades. And Kim says that she feels first grade is where the heart is and reading foundations are built. Seeing the growth, progress, and the ability to shine in her students is what makes her love the job she feels she was destined to do. And we really appreciate Kim for all she does for our kids. Kim, we're in prayer for your family with your recent loss. And we want you to know that we love you. And we wanted to present you today with the Medal of Excellence for what you do for our children. And our community mountain mover this month is Mr. Rodney Davis. And I tell you, you can't, as we've started noticing and honoring our community, there's a ton of people we can honor. But tonight, we felt like it was appropriate to honor Mr. Davis. He's been a senior breakfast sponsor at Estle County High School for the last eight years. As you know, Rodney owns a couple of restaurants here in town. And he started a roundup program through which customers can round up their bill. And the proceeds from that, along with a match from him, goes to our Family Resource Sooners to help needy families and needy children. He's hosted two charity concerts at the Steam Engine. He's raised over $10,000 for the Elizabeth Witt Christmas Party for Estle County children. And we know what a big event that is for our kids. He's one of the key sponsors of the Classified and Certified Mountain Movers Recognition Program. And he provides the gift cards at the Steam Engine each month for our selected staff. And sorry, you didn't get one for yourself. He's also the organizer and sponsor of the Markham and Wallace Charitable Lout each year that has raised over $100,000 for our local hospital to better serve Estle County. Rodney, there's nobody more deserving than you to be our mountain mover this month. And I would present you. As always, we know our sponsors, White House Clinics, BB&amp;T, Steam Engine, and there's always one more I leave out. There's four of them. Carhartt, I think, is the other one. Thank you. You gained connections to Carhartt. But we appreciate our sponsors and appreciate our mountain movers.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have our National Board Certified.
This is really exciting today to have our first group of National Board Certified teachers that have just completed their program. And when I arrived on the scene four years ago, we did not have a single National Board Certified teacher. And at that point in time, I'm going to ask Ms. Isaacs if she would come up. And at that point in time, we decided that you have to have good leadership in your school district. And of course, that begins with your principals. But then the principals can't do the job by themselves. They have to have teacher leaders that come up through their building that make a difference in the lives of kids. And they also help lead the initiatives that it takes to help our kids to be successful. And we're blessed to have four recipients today that have completed their National Board Certification. National Board Certification is sponsored, of course, by the state of Kentucky. It automatically comes with a $2,000 stipend paid for by the state of Kentucky. It also can count towards their rank change, which allows them... So generally, them completing this program means somewhere between $5,000 and $6,000 pay raise for each of these individuals. And we know who you are. We expect you to now step up in your schools. You already have, but to continue to be leaders in your building. Because these people are the future principals of our school district. And I want them to think as such. You know, they may never have that desire, but they have the ability to be the future principals and the future central office administrators in our school district. And so you'll know, we've got nine other individuals right now that are in the program. We fully expect our next group next year, or four or five individuals, to finish that program. And we're going to be starting a new cohort this spring. And we will identify another group of teachers to be a part of this program. So it's a great honor for us. And the first one is Ms. Jolene Owens.
And I'd like to thank the board also because you all provide money to reimburse us for taking this on. So thank you.
And so you know, the board did provide the first stipend. It is an expensive program too. So we felt like that if they followed through and they completed their first program, that we would help reimburse them to get them started on this path, so...
May I say too, that this is a very difficult process. And a lot of the candidates will get finished maybe in March or so with their components. But they only grade these tests once a year. So our candidates have to wait until December, usually toward the end of the year, to find out if they pass any of them. So they're very rigorous. They have to do a lot of writing and a lot of research and a lot of data collection. And they have to get all that together and send it off. And they grade it and score it. And then they're on pins and needles around Christmas time. So when they get their scores back and they pass, then it's a Merry Christmas, right? So very proud of these individuals.
I think the state does have to save that $1,000 in the fall.
There's got to be something behind it.
There's something behind it, but we're very appreciative. Kristy Floyd. Even a blind squirrel finds an acre in every... Next, Allison Banks.
I want guys to keep silent, not so many guys.
And last but not least, Tracy Baker. And I want to thank Ms. Isaacs as well, our Assistant Superintendent in charge of instruction. And she does a wonderful job. And I want you to know, I appreciate what you do for me every day. Thank you. I think we need to put off the board until Brian gets here.
Yeah, probably so.
So we're going to skip C right now.
So maybe on, next on the agenda, we have our school student presentation by West Urban.
And just so everyone knows, tonight, the board, as we talked about trying to honor student achievement and to recognize what's going on in our schools, we decided that each and every month, we will have one of our schools bring a group of students. And hopefully, you know, they're going to present to us some things that they're doing at West Urban to just highlight our students. And I want to thank our board for bringing that up and for wanting to really try to get a focus. You know, we conduct school business each and every day, or at least once a month. And we want to make sure that we don't forget, right here's the real reason that we're here. We're all employed by the citizens of Estle County to provide a first-class education for our students. So this is the reason we're here, and we want to recognize that. And so Ms. Arvin, you've got the floor for the next little bit.
Well, that's scary. I don't know how. This way? Will I do it? Okay. Well, we're here from West Urban. And we have some folks that genuinely get very excited about learning every day. And it is because they're doing some systems work within their classrooms. And they are here just to share that with you tonight. And I'm really not going to say much more than that, other than I'm going to make sure I read the list of names so I get them all right, okay? Even though it's just a few, because those of you all that know me know I can call anybody that I know the wrong name. Tilly Osborne, you all step out and say hi to them. Just wave, Tilly. Avery Graves. Ella Hardy. Gabby Bowlin. Frankie Munsey. Alyssa Moats. And Joe Dunaway. I think Ms. Miller may say just a couple of words. And then these boys and girls are going to take over the show for us.
Thank you guys for having us. We're really excited to be here. This past summer, Ms. Young, Ms. Jackson, myself, and Ms. Arvin, Ms. Hall, we were at a principal's forum or something. And this idea of continuous classroom improvement was there. And when we heard it, we were like, we have to have that for our school. And we did everything under the sun to make sure that we got it. And luckily, our district always supports us. And they were glad to help us out with this. And we've been really blessed this year to pilot this at our school. And there are some great things going on, and we're excited about it. So the systems approach is in place to improve learning results. There are eight steps to using the systems approach in the classrooms. And today, our students are just going to go through those steps briefly to let you know about them.
Step one is our... Step one is... Step one is the short-term learning requirements are displayed and clearly communicated. The black clip shows where we are in our reading unit and our math unit. And our ICANS tell us what we're going to do in the week.
Step two, class learning goals. Our class learning goals are post-it and set the expectations for all students to be proficient by the end of the year. The LA class goal is be... By the end of the year, 100% of the students will exceed proficiency for grade four ELA standards as measured by screen map. And be fluent readers as defined by the reading... By the guided reading progress report. Our math class goal is by the end of the year, school year, 100% of the students will meet or exceed proficiency by grade four math standards as measured by screen map.
Step three, our class learning results. We have graphs to tell us about our grades. And we have anonymous data, which means that we don't know who got what. And we don't have any class average. And we have a percentage of students scoring proficient. And right there where it says... And our math summative assessments is our test scores. And our math formative assessment is our, like, exit slip. And we want all of the novice for our ELA map data to all move to proficient. And we want the same for math and NMAP.
Tilly, stand this way so you can see the slides and the people. There you go. Thank you.
Our step four is our class course or program mission. Our mission is created by students in our class. And we're referred to guide decisions in our behavior. And it's meaningful to students so they know what they should be doing in school. Our class mission is to show what we do in a classroom, what the expectations are for a classroom, and be...
I'm going to talk about the plan part of the... PDSA board. The plan is what do we want students to know and do? Our next reading assessment is January 25th. The goal is of... The goal is 80% of students will meet proficiency on our unit tests. Our unit test, our scores increase each time.
I'm going to discuss the do part of the PDSA cycle. This is how we support high levels of student achievement. Our teacher puts up the strategy and always helps us learn. Then we come up with ways we learn and add to our learning poster. Some examples are turn and talk and then hand up, stand up, and pair. And these are some strategies we work on in whole group and in small group.
I'm going to tell you about the part... I'm going to tell you the part of the study part of the PDSA cycle. Study is what our results tell us about how our strategies worked. We do a plus delta. The plus means what worked for us in class. And the delta is opportunities for improvement or some things we need to work on. Ms. Jackson gives some real-world examples. Examples help us understand the material better. She tells really good stories, too. We come up with these ideas to help us during class. The act is where we study our results to see if we did good or we didn't reach the goal. This is where we discuss if our teacher will do what our teacher will do differently next week and what the students will do differently next week.
All right, now I want you all to all come over here with me a second. Now you all got a very stiff kind of presentation here. But in the classroom, it's not like that at all. Y'all come on over here. I want you to look at these folks in the face and even turn around sometimes and look at these people behind you. What happens if we don't meet a class goal? Nothing? You improve. You're right. What we do, we don't want people to be scared, do we? So thank you for saying that. That's right. We don't just punish kids because we don't meet a goal. But you all talked about what does happen if we don't meet a goal. Yes, and who comes up with that plan?
Our teachers.
Do they?
The students.
I've been in your classrooms, so please, the teachers are working hard. But who are their partners in this whole process? The students. And we're finding in these classrooms that these groups of students are going to be our future leaders, for sure. Because they've got it going on. I was an adult before I understood that there was a whole process to learning. And these folks are figuring it out much sooner. I had no idea to think about a plus delta, to honestly consider what was going well and what wasn't at the age of... What are you all, nine?
Nine is ten.
Nine is ten, different ages here. I had no idea to do that. But these folks are already doing it. So I am positive they are our future leaders. And they are going to lead this district to great things. And just because, exactly what Ms. Miller said, because we have a district that is supporting that kind of work and that kind of thinking. So I want to say thank you to you all as well. And thank you for the opportunity, parents, community, to work with such great people. We have a fabulous community. This is just proof of it, so thank you all. If you all have any questions, you can grab them as they're walking back. And I'm sure they'd be happy to answer.
And I know several of you may want to leave here in a minute once we get in our board business section. But if you would for just a minute, I'd like to go back up to item C under recognitions for just a moment. As always, January is Board Appreciation Month in the state of Kentucky. And of course, our boards are sponsored by the Kentucky School Boards Association. Ms. Hardy is actually a board member with the Kentucky School Boards Association. And I don't think sometimes people realize exactly what board members have to do. There's a lot of training that takes place for board members to be eligible to sit on the board. And it's yearly trainings. And we're getting ready here in February to go to the KSBA Winter Conference. And during that time, it starts on Friday. It's Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And it's packed minute by minute by sessions for board members in order to complete required hours that they need to do in order to retain board seats. And as you know, they're elected by the public. They are your voice. So I want the public to know that it's okay if there is something going on in one of your buildings or there's a concern you have about the schools. Then it's okay to pick up the phone and call the board members that represent you in your particular district. Items that deals with your children on an everyday basis and about their education and stuff, we want you to go to the principals. We want you to go to the schools and talk to the teachers. And we want you to feel comfortable in doing that. But sometimes there are things that impact the school system that the public wants to be able to address. And you always can do that through your board members. Contrary to popular belief, they're not paid a lot of money. It is truly a public servant position because the money that they get, you know, probably barely pays for their expenses and the time that they spend with us. And I want you to know that we've got three board members that are... Well, all of our board members are in their first term in reality because Ms. Jeannie Jo Nease, she completed a term for somebody else who was elected last time. So everybody's in their first term. They're relatively new to the Board of Education. And it's a good job. And I mean, we've got a couple of former board members here tonight that's with us. And I mean, it's always good to know that we've got quality people that are willing to step up... And I mean, it's always good to know that we've got quality people that are willing to step up and serve the people and the children of Estle County. So I'd like to honor each one of them tonight. It's just a little certificate. And I'll start with our board chair, Ms. Rhonda Hardy. And I'll ask you all to stand. Our board vice chair is Ms. Donna Isfert. And Ms. Jenny Jo Nies. Ms. Jill Samples. And Mr. Brian Covin. You know, it's sort of unique. You've been on the board so many fourteen days and you get a certificate. We want you to know that it goes downhill from here.
Already late for the first meeting.
Thank you all for what you do and.
Get what? Fresh air at five o'clock in Lexington's lot.
But it is, I know each one of them would tell you it's an honor to serve on this board and to do the business of our children each and every day. So thank you all for what you do.
Yeah, if anyone wants to leave at this time, feel free. Not that we want you to leave, but we totally understand.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Good job. Thank you all for coming. Good job, Ms. Miller. Thank you for coming. Hi, Wilson. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Bye, Ms. Jackson.
Your sister's on her way. She'll be out there to get you. I know, sorry. It's school night.
Thank you all. Cleared out half the joint.
Maybe next time I shouldn't offer that.
I was gonna say, ah, you gotta stay there.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have to approve the nutrition and physical activity report.
And Ms. Belinda's here.
You didn't leave with that group, Belinda.
You wanna come on up and that way we can.
You want us to pull the podium around for you?
Came without being nervous. Uh, it's not my favorite thing to do, y'all know that. Okay, so our two thousand eighteen uh nutrition and physical activity report card kinda is a snapshot of what we did from January to December of two thousand eighteen. Of course, mine's not folded like yours, so I'm not really sure what y'all are looking at. I'm just gonna flip over to the money side or in the meal side. Well, before I get into that, I will tell you that for the new members, you know, we do a four-week meal cycle. And right now, we're a hundred percent whole grain. We offer a wide variety of fruits and vegetables. Skim milk and one percent milk. And of course, meat. And as of July first, we will now be able to go back to our whole grain will be fifty percent of what we offer will be whole grain and one percent flavored milk, which right now is skim. So that's something Secretary Perdue has listened to kids, his grandkids in particular. So that's pretty good when your Secretary Perdue listens to his own people. And so in our efforts in Washington, I went, I went the last three or four years. So I feel like maybe I've made a little difference. So anyway, um, down in the, you can see our federal reimbursement for lunch was nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars. We served two thou- two hundred and ninety-five thousand and thirty-two meals. Our average daily participation is seventeen hundred, seventy-nine, yeah, seventy-nine and ninety-eight. And our student population was an average of twenty-three sixty-five. For breakfast, we, our federal reimbursement was three hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight. And we served one thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-six breakfast. Our participation was a thousand nineteen. Um, I want to say that we started a second chance breakfast at the high school. And their participation has jumped about fourteen percent. So I hope, I haven't talked to Ms. Williams, but I would like to maybe start that at the middle school and see what we can do there. The ba- the. The physical activity just kind of is a snapshot of what we offer as far as physical education throughout the grade levels. Um, the nutrient analysis has the calorie range for each grade level, elementary, middle and high. And what our actual totals are for the week. So we do no trans fat. Our saturated fat has to be less than ten percent a week. And that's all. If y'all have any questions? Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you. So we need to, we need action, right?
Yes, we do need a motion to approve that report.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Okay, next on the agenda, we have facilities. And first, we have a construction update with Estle Springs.
Yes, and Peter and Ron are tied up tonight, but most of these things are pretty straightforward. And I told them that we'd be able to navigate these. So the very first item is at Estle Springs is pay application number seven with uh the associated purchase orders. And that's in the amount of ninety-three thousand, ninety-four dollars and thirty-four cents. And my recommendation is, is that we uh do payment application seven.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Just quick update, at Estle Springs, ninety-nine percent complete. A couple items will be done this weekend if the snow doesn't scare everybody off. Uh, but um, of course, the roof is getting ready to start, which is not part of the actual Estle Springs contract, but part of the roofing contract. But uh, we'll have our final construction meeting this coming Thursday.
Next, we have the roof replacement project.
This, of course, is pay application number six and the direct purchase orders along with that project. It's in the total amount of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. The architect has looked at this and approved this for payment. And my recommendation is to do so.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, moving right along.
Just a quick update there. Uh, we'll tell you that the metal's on. A little bit of guttering left. The biggest issue right now is to go back. They have to, each one of those panels is a single panel that goes on that building. They have to go back and they have to seam each seam of that panel. So if that roof is not completely dry, they can't do that because of the pitch that's on there. But they're trying to get that done. I know that I'm supposed to meet with the subcontractor and Ms. Mullins. We were supposed to try to meet this week, but been a little bit behind. But he has stated that he's not gonna delay any longer on Estle Springs, that they'll go ahead and they'll keep a crew at both places. So I fully expect them to start the roof at Estle Springs, if not this coming week, the next. Uh, so the roof at the high school's probably ninety-five percent, or I'm sorry, at the middle school's probably ninety-five percent done. And so they'll be moving right along.
B, we have a.
Yes.
Approval of a change order?
Yeah, and I gave you all an additional packet that is beside there. And I'll just refer you to these one at a time. Uh, but the very top one is the change order. Uh, and it is a no-cost change order. As you know, the weather has been absolutely terrible. And the completion for that roof was supposed to have been sometime here towards the end of the month. I do think it's appropriate, after talking to subcontractor and of course, to riddle construction as well, we did feel like that fourteen days was appropriate. And that should give them time, if we can get a few clear days here. Uh, this is, I believe, for October and November. So if we can get a few clear days here, I, I wouldn't expect them to need a whole lot more weather days because they don't need weather days if the project's complete. But we did feel like at this time it was appropriate to go ahead and approve those fourteen days. And of course, you've got a subcontractor. Uh, he's not letting grass grow under his feet because, of course, the sooner he gets finished this job, he can move on to another job. So he, he's trying desperately to get this job done. But it is my recommendation that we approve this change order for fourteen weather days. It's no cost to the board. It just gives them an extension of time.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Uh, next on the agenda, we have proposed property site update.
Okay, it's the next item in the auxiliary packet that I gave you earlier. Uh, and these are the um, I guess, the proposals that were received by Ross Tarrant to conduct the survey, the typographical survey, utility surveys for the property. And again, we won't be surveying the entire thing, but we do have to look at where proposed development on these sites are going to be. If you give approval to this tonight, again, it's pending KDE approval for the purchase of that property. KDE will be here this coming Thursday morning at nine thirty AM. So um, we're hoping to move forward with that. I know that that seems like a, a pretty high number for that survey, but you gotta remember it's a hundred and forty-plus acres that we've gotta get some definite boundaries on. Uh, so it, it's pretty expensive, but when you consider the amount of land, Ross Tarrant does feel like that that is appropriate for what is being asked for them to do. So their recommendation is that we would approve SM and E. And uh, in doing so tonight, again, that will allow SM and E to get prepared to do this. Again, they're gonna wait until I give them the okay. Or KD gives us the okay and then I will give them the okay. But this is in line with what the expectation would be. Uh, the total cost for SM and E, including the private utility locator, is about thirty-five thousand dollars altogether. AE and I was over fifty thousand dollars and Endress did not put in a bid. So my recommendation is that we approve SM and E at the appropriate time.
Do we have a motion? Alright, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
The next page of your auxiliary packet is for um the geotechnical survey that has to be done. As you know, we've sort of looked at three different areas of that property for future development. And in order to really know, um, hey, is this gonna work? Is there suitable foundations here, suitable soils, suitable um bedrock in order to complete these buildings that we are looking at? So with that being said, we received three proposals. And you can see each one of those there. Again, SM and E, SNME is the low bid for that geotechnical survey. And because of the fact that they have been really the geotech surveyors on most of the projects that we've done here, they do have a, an understanding of what you may find in this area. And of course, that's gonna be very important. We want to make sure that if we make the investment to build a building, that the foundations and stuff are gonna be appropriate so that we don't have issues in the future. So with that being said, the architect's recommendation is SM and E. Uh, my recommendation would be for that as well. And it's for a total of sixty-six hundred dollars. And I know work will be done until KD approves it. When KD approves the purchase, we'll turn them loose.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Next on the agenda, we have district facility planning.
You have in your next page of your auxiliary packet is the local planning committee membership. And I've been working to finalize some of these today. Most of these positions are completed. Uh, we are still in need of selecting a high school teacher. Uh, the person that had originally been selected does not live in Estle County. That's one of the requirements, that they have to be an Estle County resident. The person would have been a, a good member of this committee, but due to regulations, they just could not serve. Uh, also, there's a little bit of issue possibly with our first community leader that's listed there because he is a part-time employee. And the reg says that an employee cannot be a member of the community representation on this committee. Uh, I have asked, just because we know that Mr. Richardson is a really important member of our community and would be a good member to serve on this board. But if it does not matter, if it, if employment includes part-time or full-time, we will have to choose another community member. Had a lot of interest. We had about ten different community members. As some of y'all know, we've talked about some of them. And um, so that would be the membership as it is right now. Uh, so the last key piece that the board controls is that we do need a board member to represent the board on this committee. Remember, it's a four-year committee appointment. So, and if something happens, one of these people leaves or if a child graduates or moves on to another school and they, we have to select a replacement, we can. Most of the work on this committee will be done in February and March. Hopefully, if we get a good district facility plan, we'll not have to meet again until twenty twenty-three. But if something does come up, then we would have to re-convene the committee in order to complete some project that might not be listed in the new district facility plan. But we're really gonna try hard to make sure that this district facility plan has to be to KDE and the Kentucky State Board on June one for it to gain approval. And what's important about this, if you think about your current facility plan, Estle Springs was a priority. It's gone. It's done. Uh, the roofing project at the middle school was a priority, almost an emergency because of the roof leaks and stuff. So that project is done. The new area technology center, we are on track to break ground in May. And I've got some good news in a letter for y'all later that helps us move forward with that from the Kentucky State House of Representatives for their support of that facility. That's done. So what's gonna be important in this facility plan? of that facility. That's done. So what's going to be important in this facility plan coming up is our high school is going to become our number-one priority, to make sure that we complete the final renovation of Estle County High School. After six shots at it, we're going to do number seven, and we're going to finish that facility. That includes the athletic facilities, hopefully, as we work with KDE. And we still may have some issues to address because of Estle Springs, because, remember, South Urban is a building that's in transition. We cannot spend bonding money over there, but there's no need to spend bonding money over there right now. And after the high school is complete and athletic facilities are addressed, our next major construction project in this district will be sometime around 2032, when I'm no longer the superintendent. And I don't know if you all will still be on the board or not, but if you are, that will be the middle school, to build a brand-new middle school. So that's where we're slowly taking care of our facility needs in this district. And when we're through, and hopefully, we can be through in the next four years, we'll have facilities in this school district that will be second to none of anybody in this state. And our kids deserve that. So I just need a board member that will be a part of this committee, and that's your all's choice.
I don't mind a volunteer. I mean, unless somebody else wants to do it. I've done some of this with the Votex, you know, and that kind of thing. But if somebody else wants to do it, I mean, I'm right here in town, so whatever you want. Unless Rhonda just wants to do it.
I mean, I don't, I don't care to do it, but if you want it, you can have it. I won't take it away from you. But I, I mean, I am available, so I don't, I don't mind.
We would need a motion and a second for whatever y'all want today.
Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Any opposed? It's yours, Donna.
And the three community members, you all will need to approve those three community members. And if not, if that is not, if the one is not appropriate, then we'll come back in February and approve the next one. We may can do that, you know, may, might cause them to miss a meeting or anything, but we'll, we can approve it officially at the next thing, and I will talk to y'all about that as time goes. But as for right now, I would need a motion to approve the three community members. Those are your appointees.
We have, okay, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Moving right along. Next on the agenda, we have contracted services. I'll start with our attorney.
Okay, it's also in your auxiliary packet that I gave you. We had a rundown of the two proposals that we received, and these were the only two we received. Is that correct, Angie? So, of course, you have the ability to choose one of these two attorneys, or you can, at that point in time, we can start trying to enter into negotiations with someone else, or see if there is someone else that you all would want to hire. We had a submittal from Porter Banks Baldwin and Shaw, and they, I believe they are in Pressonsburg. And Jonathan Shaw is one of the lead attorneys. And we've checked references. They're in several school districts here in eastern Kentucky. And a matter of fact, I spoke directly with the superintendent of Paintsville yesterday, and they're the, not only was they the board attorney while he's at Paintsville, he was also at Breathitt County. And Mr. Shaw was the board attorney there in Breathitt County, and he has nothing but good to say about Mr. Shaw. And you can see his fees there. There is not a retainer applicable. Doesn't mean that they wouldn't enter into a retainer situation if you wanted to, but I've started to find out that most board attorneys usually work by an hourly rate. They will come to board minutes, or board meetings if you want them here. They do charge their hourly rate, while at the board meetings, they charge travel to be here. So you did see there that what their, what their fees would be. The other law firm was Masnick, Raskin, and Ryder. And the attorney that works really there within their school law is Tia Combs. And Tia's mom is Teresa Combs, who used to be the KSBA attorney. So you can see there what their fees are. Those fees are a little bit higher. There's breakdowns. I know that they are also in several school districts. The closest one to us is Owlesley County, where Tia is the board attorney. I think you have two good options there. I mean, if we look strictly in terms of what the rate is for their services, of course, Porter Banks Baldwin and Shaw would have, the fees would be a little bit less. I think both of them are quality law firms. Both of them are very experienced in education law. It's your attorney. Just remember that. The superintendent has the ability to use the board attorney, unless the superintendent and the board is in some type of disagreement, then, of course, he is your attorney. He does represent you all. That's why I hesitate to make a motion on either one of them. I feel comfortable recommending either one of these people to be your board attorney. Just know that you will not always get Ms. Combs, and you will not always get Mr. Shaw. If there are different cases going on, there are other attorneys that work within those offices. But based on what my conversations is that Ms. Combs would be the go-to person for us if we choose her firm. Mr. Shaw is going to be the go-to person for us if we choose his firm. I feel comfortable with either one of them. And as I said, it is your all's choice.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we go with Porter Banks Baldwin Shaw.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion?
I just, there's a big difference in cost, and
And no difference in quality.
And no difference. And both of them came highly recommended, and think it's just a cost issue for us.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed?
Ms. Howell, if you would, if you'll notify them tomorrow and make sure that Mr. Shaw and his firm will accept, and we'll be in further contact.
Next on the contracted services, we have our auditor.
I just need a motion for you all to have another, to approve an RFP for auditing services. We've had our current auditor for three years. It's just that time of year, or that time that, usually, we approve that for one year, and there is a, always a rollover provision for two more years if you're satisfied with those services. And we basically, at this point in time, we have exhausted that three-year. And I think, you know, I think it's appropriate at the end of every three years to look at it. And I think at this point in time to look at proposals for new auditing services. And who knows? It may continue to be Eric Cloyd and Associates. We'll just see who's out there. There's only a select group of firms in the state of Kentucky approved by the Kentucky Department of Education to do this anyway. So we just need a a motion to create a RFP and solicit services.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, next on the agenda, we have a depository in our banking services.
We are also at the end of our three years with Citizens Guarantee Bank. As you know, they were our only bank that submitted a request, a proposal, last time for banking services. Since that time, I've been approached by several different firms, a couple of different firms, about banking services. Any product that they have ever offered, Citizens Guarantee is already beating those, beating those rates of return for our CDs and for our general accounts that we have here at the Board of Education. Also, we know what a great partner that Citizens Guarantee is in our community. They're good to our employees, and they provide services to our employees. I personally think that based on the fact that we have spoken to other regional banks, and we, we've even looked at national banks in terms of CD rates, Citizens Guarantee has stepped up to the plate for us, and they're a partner with us. And my recommendation is, is that we renew their three-year contract for banking services.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Next, we have our fiscal agent.
As you know, hopefully, we're going to be bonding quite a bit of money here over the next little bit. And your fiscal agent is your bonding agent. They help get together the financials that's needed in order for us to finance our building projects. Again, so the public knows when we have a building project, we're basically taking out a twenty-year loan in order to pay for those projects. That's the way school financing for facilities works in the state of Kentucky. Hilliard Lines has been our partner for a long time in this school district. There's only about three different groups that do this. We've recently been approached by Ross Sinclair, and I worked with Ross Sinclair in our previous district, and they offer fine services as well. But the one thing you'll find out about your fiscal agent, the bonds are going to sell for what the bonds sell for. The fiscal agent fees are generally the same across the board. Hilliard Lines has been with us now, as I said, for several years. We feel comfortable with them, and there's some great people at Ross Sinclair. And it hurts me, honestly, to not do business with them, but I think it would hurt us even more not to continue to do business with Hilliard because they know what our current status is. They know what our future plans are. They've been lock and step. And I can tell you, when a man shows up here to meet with this board, when his wife is expecting a baby within two days, and he's four or five hours away from home, that tells you their level of commitment to this school board. And I think that my request would be that we would continue to use Hilliard and Lines as our fiscal agent.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we continue to use Hilliard and Lines as our fiscal agent.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, next we have our student accident insurance.
We've, of course, as probably ninety-nine percent of all school districts in the state of Kentucky, we use Roberts Insurance. And Bob Roberts and his sons, they do a fantastic job. I was actually in a meeting with them yesterday. This is a little earlier than normal, but there's two things going on right now in the insurance industry. There, there's expected rate hikes that are coming. So it's one thing that now we can go ahead and get a rate locked in, even though the coverage doesn't start until July one. Also, one of the things this year, we have had a few additional claims that we've not had in the past. You know, we had bus accident. Remember that you all pay for insurance for every student in this school district. While they are at school, or on their way to school, from the time they get on the bus to the time they get off the bus, if they're participating in school activities, school trips, those students are covered at all times. And that's at additional cost to the board that this board has always done. And my recommendation is that we would continue to do that because the other part of this policy is your liability coverage for all of your athletics. And really, the, the additional amount we pay to ensure the other two thousand students in our school district is minimal compared to what it would cost us if we just did away with it. It's just not wise, I think, for vain for our buck. And of course, this provides our insurance in case of a student athletic injury. Remember that the catastrophic insurance policy, and I hope that we never have to use it, but we all know that sometimes things happen in athletics, that it doesn't take a lot of money sometimes for all of a sudden, an injury, a knee injury can turn into a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars by the time you deal with surgery and all of the physical therapy and stuff that goes along with it. And I hope we never face a catastrophic injury in terms of a student death. But this policy covers up until the point in time that the Kentucky High School Athletic Association catastrophic insurance takes effect. So it's very important that we keep this policy, keep it going, cover all of our kids. And as it sits right now, it is a two thousand dollar increase over our premium last year, but they feel like it's advantageous now to get on board for July and go ahead. So I trust them, and I think, as does all the state. So I would, my recommendation is we approve this proposal for student accident insurance.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Last on the contracted services, we have property insurance.
That's the last one, really, the last big thing for a contracted service. And we've been with Limbo Insurance Agency for the last several years in our district, and they've done a good job with us. But also, I know that with property insurance, property insurance companies are sort of up and down. There's probably about three different groups that provide property insurance. I'm not saying that we would go with a different insurance agent, but I also know that we want to make sure this coming year. We've struggled a little bit with a couple of claims that we've had that I've not been satisfied on. And when we have people that have to fight to get a car paid for that we actually have caused the accident, and, you know, I think it's very important in our community that we step up and we honor our commitments. If we have a bus hits a vehicle, I think regardless of what the circumstances are, I mean, as long as it's our fault, our insurance company should be there to protect us and to make those claims. And when we have to fight to get our claims paid, I'm just not a big fan of that. Because I'm going to tell you right now, the bottom line would have been if they hadn't paid this past claim, and we're still having troubles with that claim right now on items that have not been paid. And I'm basically refusing to pay them. And right now, we're in good enough shape, but I could tell you this. Before, we'd let a citizen of Estle County feel harsh at this school district because there wasn't a claim paid, we'd pay it ourselves out of our general fund. And I'm just not going to have that. And I want to make it clear when it comes time for us to bid our property insurance. It's coming up here in the next month or so anyway. So this, your vote tonight for us to open up property insurance and request proposals from different groups, even if it does become another insurance agent, it gives me the leverage to say, we're not going to go through this again. And I can tell you, Angie has spent countless hours, and it's not just been one claim, there's been two claims that we have fought over this year. And I'm just not, and, and listen, and they've been very good in other areas, you know? They paid off on the middle school roof that was damaged due to the storm. We're expecting a check on the Estle Springs roof as soon as the roofers finish, and we can show proof that that roof's finished. They have paid some claims, but they should. We're paying the policy. I mean, and that's, that's my aggravation. And my aggravation is not so much with the agent. I think their hands have been tied sometimes. But if that's the only choice we have of an insurance company to this agent, we need to look elsewhere and see what that proposal could be as well. We may very well We may very well end up with the same group, same insurance company. I'm asking you for permission to make sure that we get the best coverage for our school district that protects us against liability. And that's just to do a request for proposal.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, next on the agenda, we have our draft budget.
Angie's here and of course, she and I have sat down a couple of times here over the last couple of weeks. And usually what happens with the draft budget is that you're usually working off of this year's numbers. And generally, it's a rollover of those numbers in order to create that draft budget. But we also know that there's some things that the board has requested that we know that we've got to do in order to continue some of the facilities improvement. Because everything we have, we can't bond everything. A prime example is the roof on this building right here has not been replaced in almost 30 years. We're going to have to put a roof on this building. And if not, we're going to have problems. We don't need problems with the roof, so that's something that we have to budget for. So, you know, we've strategically looked at some of the things that we have maintenance items that need to be done. We've got a parking lot at West Urban that needs to be paved. We've got several different issues like that that we take care of through the different parts of this budget. So for the most part, you will see that we have really taken this year's budget and we have really rolled it over into the new year. Now, you're going to see a change in the amount of buses that we buy under property, under buses, you're going to see a reduction there because we bought five buses last year. We're only buying two this coming year. That money can be shifted to maintenance and some other areas. You are also going to see a reduction in the amount of money spent on instruction because we know that we're going through that phase right now where we have one school that's losing 190 students at the fifth grade level, they're getting back 140-some students. I mean, that's an automatic 40-student reduction for that school, so that does impact staffing at that school. And so, we are expecting a couple of teaching positions not to be renewed. There's also some administrative positions, if we have retirements, that we have plans to look at not filling those positions. So you're going to see a reduction in instruction, some of those things. We're also expecting several retirements. Those retirements really, as our pension system remains sort of up in the air, you know, the Legislative Committee was meeting today on pensions. I know Bo Barnes from the teacher retirement system was in front of that committee today. As long as there's unrest with the teacher retirement system, you're going to see people that have their time in, they're retiring to try to protect their retirement investment. So we may very well see some reductions there. Those are pretty much the highlights. You've seen some reduction in transportation, you've seen some reduction in instructional costs. Always remember that each and every year, we have about $120,000 of rank changes and step increases in our employee pay. We also know that this year, we have about an $80,000 increase in our CERS contributions for retirement. That's $200,000 we had to account for. So those reductions in buses and instruction has went to offset those couple items. So very preliminary budget. It's basically one of those times that we're here to really meet the requirements of KRS to have a draft budget. Angie, did I leave anything out that we've talked about?
You'll notice there's not even a special revenue budget that's not required this time because it is so.
We got some federal funding issues out there, you know, with the government shutdown. We feel like that for the food service program, we're good through March. If this thing did drag out into March, then, you know, we could have some problems. But one thing that has been pretty good, our food service program has a pretty hefty budget. I mean, it's not overflowing with a lot of money, but we could actually cover some expenses for a couple of months in order to get by, so I don't really have a fear there. Our federal money, like Title I, Special Ed, most of that money is already, you know, it's already at the state level, so we don't expect any delays in this. We did have a change in our poverty numbers, which concerns me a little bit because Title I and Title II and all those title programs are based on your poverty numbers. They've actually decreased and Lisa is going to be checking with them, but that number is generated through the state, it's generated through reporting, like through the different government offices. I don't know if we're, part of that is that the loss in students over the last two years has sort of caught up with us a little bit. But we are now only funded at a 90% hold harmless rate, which means if the worst happened and we got a reduction in title funding, we would lose 10% of the, we could lose no more than 10% of the funding that we received this year. Which for us is, we're probably about $2.5 million in federal funding with Title and Special Ed and all those programs. So you're talking about $220,000, somewhere in there that we could possibly, it doesn't mean you're going to lose it. I've never, to this point in time, I've been involved with Title I now for a long time as the Title I Director and Superintendent. I've never seen that reduction in title funds happen at where you've hit that whole threshold. But it's still a little concerning with everything going on. But we'll keep an eye out for that and sort of see where we're at with that. But I feel like it's a good draft budget. If y'all have any questions, Angie and I'll be glad to answer them. Angie knows it better than I do, front to back. I just hit the highlights. Angie has plugged in every single number of that budget, so if you've got any particular questions, now's the time. May will be the time we'll really have to nail it down. We'll have to get a whole lot better picture. But I tell you what, I feel like we're pretty close right now. So we'll see. The only thing that will happen is if there are some revenue things. What scares me about the legislature is they're sitting down there in a non-budget year and if they pass some non-funded mandates and that passes on to the school district, we're going to have to find the money to pay for them. And our revenues and stuff are pretty tight. And, you know, we've talked about this as I've met with our new board members over the last couple of weeks, just trying to get them up to speed on where we're at and everything. And I know this board, we made a commitment that if the nickel passed, that we would not raise taxes for four years. And we're now, this coming year will be the third year of that. And I think it's important that we keep our word to our community. We told them that we would not raise taxes for a four-year period. So this is the third year coming. So, I mean, I can tell you right now, you'll not get a recommendation from me to raise taxes in September. So with that being said, we will have to look at every line, budget line item to make sure that we're within the proper parameters. But now, we've got a pretty good contingency at $1.6 million. That's a little bit over 10% of our general fund, which is a good contingency. And if we have to dip into contingency a few thousand dollars to make the budget balance, we will.
I had a question, you may have addressed it and I missed it, but the land site acquisition?
Uh huh.
So we didn't actually put anything in there for that?
Well, because right now, we're using bonding money, which is...
So we don't have to make any kind of...
No. If something happens that KDE does not approve the entire purchase price of that property for bonding, then we would have to come back and we would have to do an allocation for land purchase for whatever the excess of that land is. That is, if you want to continue to purchase that property, you know, it's a road block we'll have to cross when the time comes. If they don't approve that property for us to bond it, then you would have to buy that property from general fund dollars.
I was thinking that we talked about that before.
Yeah. But until we have that answer, since this is just a draft budget, we just don't put it in there, it is on our radar.
Okay.
We know that.
I just wanted to point that out.
Good question. And the other thing about that is, is that we do have some options there. We can always do a capital funds request to pay for our bus or our two school buses that we've got purchased right now. We can do a capital funds request to pay for one of those buses. You know, that's about $100,000 that could offset that land purchase if we have to do it. There's some options there without it hurting us. And again, our contingency is such that we've protected it pretty good over the last four years, so we could make part of that purchase there. We would not have to purchase all of it with general fund money, but there is a possibility we might be asked to kick in an amount.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure that we kind of took that into consideration because I knew we'd had that discussion.
Until we, and like I said, this is just to meet the requirement to have a pretty good ideal. In May, we have to be a lot more...
Drilled down.
Drilled down. And in that particular case, by then, we'll know. We're going to know here by March on the property and stuff. The KD will move pretty quick because they know it's important for us to get the bus garage started. We're going to do without a bus garage for about six months. So we're trying our best to try to figure out how to do that. So we need a motion to approve that draft budget if, and that's my recommendation to do so.
Is that a motion? Donna's making a motion, okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll try it.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have consent items.
You have your minutes and you have your treasure report and payment of bills. We had an additional treasures report. We had some items here in the office come due and we didn't get them to Monday. January's always a hard time because you've got so many people off during Christmas and stuff, sometimes they don't get bills out exactly at the right time. We try to do that rarely, bringing you something that you don't have time to look over, but we felt like that when we needed to, so you have it. Also included in your auxiliary packet, the band boosters is applying for a grant. Since they are a fundraising arm of this board, I did tell them that that grant would have to be approved by you all. It's for approximately $16,000. There is no match, there's no obligation on the board's part. If they are able to get the grant, then they would purchase the instruments that they're trying to buy and then they would be reimbursed through the grant for that purchase. So it sounds to me like it's a pretty good opportunity for them to help support our band. And so, everybody, the public will know just recently, because this year, the band competition was in Lexington, the money that we had budgeted for travel for them, which usually pays for their motel rooms and stuff, we've already converted to allow them to buy instruments with that money. As a matter of fact, I think the boosters matched that money that we allowed them to do. That's something I do a lot of times. We don't care to help out different groups, we help out schools at times. A lot of time, we're going to tell you, well, we'll give you five if you'll match it with five. So I want to make sure that they've got some buy-in to the process. We don't, we want to support our kids and support our programs, but we just don't want to have an open pocketbook that anybody can come. We want them to have a little buy-in at times. And they've already purchased some instruments, so I think this will help them tremendously. And also, you have a letter there that deals with the KIP survey. And the KIP survey is a drug and alcohol survey, it's done every year. It's at the, there's four different grade levels, starting in middle school all the way up through high school. It gives the state of Kentucky some information about that. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't do that. So just so you'll know what those items are, my recommendation is to approve the consent items.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Donna, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Next, do we have any public comments? Yes, sir.
I want to welcome the new members. And also, Ms. Apple, as a former board member, I want to say, I just think it's great that they have a retired teacher on the board. I mean, that perspective that it brings to the board, I think is wonderful.
We were trying to figure out if you were the first retired teacher to serve on our school board, yeah.
I found out at the Winter Symposium.
Jim Koster, there you go, okay. We were trying to think upstairs, but yeah.
Lee County also has one.
Well, that's good.
I will try not to, we'll try to make this brief. But Patty and I realize there's no one on this board that has done a superintendent search or even knows why we hired this man. We thought we would come and explain a little bit of that. First, I'm going to tell you is this, I've been through two, you've been...
Three.
Superintendent searches. And they cost about $20,000 to do a search. All the training and everything you have to do. And of course, I'm sure you all know the average salary's $129,000, $130,000 now for a superintendent. When we hired Mr. Saylor, we gave him three charges, three criterias we wanted to see improve. The first was academic improve, you know? Now, it's my belief that really you're improving test scores, there's a couple of things there. It falls more on the teachers, the students, and the principal. And for all the principals out there, the state to keep the target the same every year type of thing, you know how that goes. But from my understanding, test scores have improved. And I had the honor of working for Ms. Miller here as a volunteer a couple of years ago, and I know what a great job she did in teaching. The second thing we gave him, and this is not in particular order, we wanted a VOTTEC program for this district. It was our belief all along that this is something that's missing, a lot of our kids don't go to college, and we needed that VOTTEC program.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And last was, we wanted equity throughout the district. That meant some fairness in pay scales, there were some folks that may have been getting a little more than others, and time off and a few other things, and we wanted equity.
We did. I think we, in kind of summation of what we wanted to say about Mr. Saylor tonight, is that you all have a different relationship with him than we did because we were part of the group that selected him. So we did a lot of homework and we really dug deep to find out a lot about Mr. Saylor and then interviewing him and going through the process. And so, I think we're here just in support of him tonight, just to let you guys know what a great job he's done for your district, our district. He did meet all of the criteria we set for him. And we're very proud of our selection and we hope that you all feel the same. But I kind of feel like he's at the point in his career here where he's like, I kept, I was sitting up there thinking, it's like a new pair of boots and how you have to break them in, and then they get to the point where they feel really good because they've been through the tight part and the squeaky part and all the things that you had to get to get them just right. But I feel like he's at his point in his career here, that he's just right. He has a good feel for our district, he knows where he wants to take this district. He, I will say, he's been very, he's been very on the scene in our community, I'm very proud of that. And the fact that you guys tweet and you're on Facebook and Instagram and all of that, which is a step above where we were. It's really great to be able to get this on the social media and find out what you guys are doing because it's out there. And we had trouble getting the word out there, what, all the good things that we were doing. And we wanted so badly for everybody to know, but I mean, we have the newspapers here and they did a good job of covering it, but you guys are on it every day and there's something out there and I still get, I get those. And I still get, I get those, and I'm still interested in what you all are doing. And I think he's, he took a leadership role in that, getting us into the, I don't know what phase, I don't know, we're older, but into the younger generation and how they communicate and how they, you know, get the word out. And you all have done a great job with that. But I feel like he, you know, he started that. I mean, he told us what he wanted, what he wanted to do, and we were like, great, go for it. Because, but anyway, I think we're just here tonight just to sort of, in summary, support him and just let you guys know how we feel about him and what a great job we think he has done for this district, and there's more to come. So we just, we just want to support him tonight and just let you guys know what's, you know, kind of our feelings about it.
And I will say this. We agreed to give him a raise the first year he was here, if he met the standards. And if I remember correctly, the board voted to give him a 10% raise. He didn't take it, because his state cut money. He took the 1% that the teachers got that year. So I want to say that about integrity.
Yes.
And I guess...
Integrity is, and he's been a very good fiscal manager for this district. You know, we got hit with a lot of things. I mean, the kids, the KISDA, the KISB, all the...
Yeah.
KISB lawsuit. And I mean, we had to pay monies that we really shouldn't have been having to pay of our general funds. And I mean, we took a lot of hits. And then, I know you guys are still taking him, because, you know, he would come to us and he'd be like, okay, we've got this many cuts to deal with. We've got to figure out how we're gonna, how we're gonna deal with the budget cuts that we are facing. And we did it. Every year, we did it under his leadership. He found a way. And so he, I just want to say, he is a wonderful fiscal agent for this district. He's done great with our monies. He's been a very good, very good caretaker.
And thank you. And regardless, we respect your decisions.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you all.
Thanks for letting us hear your opinions.
Thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have our superintendent's report and board member forum.
You have your personnel actions in front of you there. And I think those are up to date. Also, as part of the auxiliary packet, I gave you, my activity report is in there. A little bit fewer items this month, because there was some non-contract days I took during Christmas, vacation days. So, but those are some of the events. And I tell you, one that really was a great event was the Community Action Council with the kickoff of Southeast Head Start that was on January 3rd. I was the only public school official that was asked to speak at that meeting of eight school districts. And I really feel like that Community Action Council, they are really excited to partner with us. And I believe that we're gonna be able, I may be wrong, we'll know by March 1st, but Ms. Reese is here as our preschool director, and our meetings with them has been very positive. And I believe that we will be able to hold where we're at now. But I do think there's a possibility that we're gonna be able to add another preschool. And that's one of the things when we got here, if we're able to add another preschool, that's three preschools units that we've added since I arrived here. It's 60 more kids that are receiving early childhood education. And believe me, that's where the gap starts. The gap starts when they're four years old. Because if you have any kindergarten student that has not been to preschool, and a kindergarten student that's been to preschool, you're gonna see a huge difference unless that child that did not attend preschool, they've had to have a parent that's worked with them hand in hand almost every day in order to meet the guidelines that they have to have in terms of being kindergarten-ready. So that was a huge event that we went to. January 11th was our final punch for Estill Springs. I told you, that's coming slowly to, slowly to completion. And big PBA meeting today on our property, trying to move forward with that purchase. Also, I also included, you've got a, you've got a packet there for KSBA, but I also included an email. I think you all got this today, but I just wanted to call it to your all's attention. It talks about the, talks about the sessions that count not only for regular board credit, but also for charter school credit as well. And I think, you know, initial charter school training you have to have, it's really gonna be on your all's plate, Sheila, you and Brian there. If you all will get that information, we need to get that too, Felicia. I mean, this coming week, Friday, if not, the motel's gonna be full. And I don't know where you'll end up having a stay. It's too cold to be walking outside in Louisville this time of year, so you need to make sure that you get that in. Item D is something that we'll have to have board action on. Mr. Arthur is putting together the school calendar committee. There is a new makeup of the people that have to sit on the calendar committee, and we're a little bit, we're not behind on it. Other people's just getting a quicker start on it. We need to have one done here in the next little bit. So we really need a board member to sit in on that calendar committee. And, you know, it's totally up to you all. I know we had talked a little bit and thought, because Ms. Sheila has actually been a teacher in our school district and understands school calendars a little bit more, maybe from that standpoint of it, that maybe she would be a good member. But if she's not willing to serve and somebody else is...
I'm willing, sorry, just right now, I'm dealing with some medical issues with my mother. So depending on when it's scheduled, because I'm taking her to the doctor.
I think that's pretty flexible, isn't it, Mr. Arthur, to be able to do that? So if she's willing and you are willing to appoint her, we need a motion and a second to appoint her to that committee.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Item E, and it's in your auxiliary packet, it's with a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, that that letter right there, dated on January 15th, from the Majority Floor Leader of the Kentucky House, it says, "They support Estill County to be the 54th state-operated facility in the state of Kentucky." So now, we have support letters from the Senate, Senator Stivers. We have support letters from Representative Bam Carney. House leadership did meet today. It was discussed in House leadership today. So I fully expect that to be part of the budget. Just to be safe, we're gonna sort of see what happens here in May moving forward, and we're gonna, we're gonna try to approach the governor. And the best thing that could happen is that the governor, when he proposes his budget, that Estill County is indicated for the 54th area technology center in his budget. So we're gonna try to go for the trifecta on this. And that way, if we can do that, then it allows us to move forward. I can tell you what, I feel a lot better about that shovel hitting the ground in May to break ground for the Career Tech Center. And I've talked to the architects today. They are moving forward. The structural engineers met yesterday. I'm telling you, that Career Tech Center is gonna be built. And it is a long time coming for anybody that's been a part of this community. It's been talked about for over 15 years. And we will break ground here in May for that facility. That was a big news. And the email that I got from the Workforce Cabinet today was, "Mr. Saylor, you do not have to appear before the Workforce Committee on January 26th. Now with the letter of support from the House and the Senate, we will no longer need to speak to you about the grant." So the grant is secure at this point to move forward. That's good news. Legislative update, couple of really important bills that I think that has come about. Senate Bill 1, just be aware, is school safety. Lot of good things being discussed in that. My greatest fear is an unfunded mandate. Hopefully, if there's gonna be money needed, then it's gonna be delayed until the next budget cycle, or they're gonna open the budget up. And that's a little scary for school districts, for them to open the budget up at this time. But I think they will supply the money for everything out of that. House Bill 3, or I'm sorry, Senate Bill 3, and I believe it, is it Senate Bill 2 and 3? One of them deals with site-based councils. And I know that KEA is not a big fan of that bill, but I can tell you that KSBA and the Kentucky Association of School Superintendents supports that bill, because what it does, it gives the superintendent the authority to hire the school principal whenever there is a vacancy. And if I'm gonna be held accountable for school performance, I sure should be, have the same, I should have the same level of trust that our school principals have, because school principals have the sole authority to hire teachers in their school, as long as they don't give it away. It's their authority to hire teachers. And that way, whenever there's an issue, principals can be held accountable. That's why I tell our principals all the time, make sure you hire the best person. Not your neighbor, not somebody that's kin to somebody. And I'm all for that. If we can find a person in Estill County to fill that position, and they're a quality person, yes, by all means, hire an Estill County person. But we better hire the best person, because it's, our kids right here, we had tonight here depend on that. I want that same ability. If I'm gonna be held responsible for the academic performance of this school district, I think I should have the ability to hire that principal. And if I hired a wrong principal, the five of you sitting right here hold me accountable for that. Because I can tell you right now, I have no authority when it comes to hiring that principal. I'm one of six votes. So I think that is an important change. Again, I know KEA's not for that, but I know that school administrators support that across the board. Also, the other big issue has to do with, I completely went blank. Has the two parents and two teachers, but there's one, oh, tribunal reform. And that is supported also by KSBA and KESS. I do not believe that KEA supports that bill again, but I will tell you plain and simple, the superintendent in Fayette County needs to have the ability, if we have a teacher drag a kid down the hallway, that teacher doesn't need to be in our school system. And I'm just telling you that there are some things that take place in schools. Sometimes we get what we deserve in the public schools because of some of the behavior we put up with. And we can't protect individuals that don't protect kids. And that's a good example. And I know, I've been in situations before where we've had teachers that's been incapacitated, not in this school district, but in other, teachers incapacitated in the classroom, teachers that are guilty of selling drugs to kids, and we could not remove them because of the tribunal system. And that's a dirty shame. That should not happen. It should never happen. Tribunal reform is needed. And, you know, I, I just think that those are three good bills, three very good bills. And then hopefully, with pension reform, if there is a pension bill, I hope it's done with the utmost respect for our employees and for our retirees, because I do believe a promise is a promise. We also realize that we can make concessions. And I think the school, school employees, and I think state employees are willing to make concessions, but I do not believe the state should be able to dump all the responsibility to the employees when it comes to the public retirement system. So we'll continue to work with them on that. With that being said, last one is, I just gave you a note here. Here's some of the notes, we're starting to get on the Urban High thing. I can't go anywhere that I don't get stopped. If they're an Urban High graduate, they were at that program, they heard about that program, that was a great night for our school district. And those are the types of things that we want to be able to do. That's my report. Sorry if I was too long.
Okay. Anything from the board members?
I have something.
Okay.
I would just like to say that I think it was a great night to showcase West Urban Elementary. And I think they own that, and they kind of were told about it at the last minute, that I was super excited to see our kids showcased and to see them stand up and show Estill County what's going on in our district, and particularly tonight at West Urban. And I know the other schools are gonna have an opportunity to do the same thing. And we, as a board, discussed this for a long time at our last meeting, and we are just so excited and we are so proud of our kids in this district and our teachers. And I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. You won't find a group of harder-working people than the staff that we have in this district and our kids. We're blessed to have good kids. We have a good school district. We have a good community. It's a great community to raise kids, live and work, and I'd put it up against anywhere in the country, right here in urban Kentucky. So thank you for those comments. Our teachers greatly appreciate that.
So we need a motion to go into closed session.
I make a motion, we go into closed session.